The Committee of the Whole Public Works Environmental Service and Facilities for Monday, August 20th. I can have a motion to approve the agenda. Counselor Smale and Mr. Cameron, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Does anyone have any disclosures of pecuniary interests and if so, the general nature thereof?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Counselor.
Item 7E, City of Drain Engineers Report. The individual in the report, the individual farmer is relative mine, my brother-in-law, so I will be excused and excuse myself.
Okay. So that's, you'll file that with the Deputy Clerk?
It's the...
Perfect. Thank you. Okay.
And mine is 7G. All of these is with McKinnon and also involves a drain that runs beside my sister's property. And so I will be declaring conflict on that one. And I don't have the paper here.
Counselor Smale?
None.
Gentlemen, your own side?
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll leave those for collection by the Deputy Clerk. Item four is business arising from the previous Public Works Environmental Service and Facilities Committee minutes. Does anyone have any business arising?
One item.
Yes, ma'am.
Just, I was looking for a follow-up of the series by 7F. I just didn't know where we ended up with the TR Legere agreement with the library. Is that...
Through you, Mr. Chair. The TR Legere group decided to go with three locations rather than four. So they will not be renting space from the library.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Morell?
If I may, it's on the same page as the one that Counselor Smale asked about on page three of five. Up at the top, the second paragraph there, "Committee inquired if the township has been able to monitor flows from the Prescott Water Treatment Plan. No other township receives reports. However, staff has not received a full subreport quite some time. Is there been any update or anything new on that issue?"
Director of Operations has been away for a couple of weeks, but perhaps he has something?
Sure. Thank you through the Chair. We have received the flow reports for the wastewater treatment flows from January to June.
Thank you.
Any other business arising? Okay. So we're on to item five, Delegations, Presentations, None. Six, Discussion Items, and there is a discussion item circulated at the Deputy Mayor's request regarding a resolution on NAFTA for AMO. Deputy Mayor?
Through you, Mr. Chair, should the staff have asked?
Sure.
I just briefly, I wanted to just point out that in the addenda package was the City of Niagara Falls resolution. But I believe the Deputy Mayor's intent was to support AMO rather than just reiterate the City of Niagara Falls. So the AMO report is now in progress. It's virtually identical.
Yeah. And the reasoning board is clearly they didn't... I cannot articulate it any better than that.
Okay. So any discussion or motion coming in?
Just see a resolution at the council meeting if I can get support of the table, so I would move and make the AMO resolution be supported by council.
Okay. So is there concurrence by the committee that the resolution be forwarded to council?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. All right. Thank you. So we're on to item 7A, and that is the Meadowlands Drive water break costs as an information item. Director of Operations?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The final costs are in for that break on Meadowland Drive totaling $8,461.14. It's broke down by labor, equipment, part material, and laboratory costs as requested after June committee meeting.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I can see the numbers.
Yeah. I don't know.
Same reasonable claims.
Well, that's what I was gonna say.
Well, I thought it was quite reasonable.
I was pleased.
I can see way worse.
Yeah. So that's good.
Yes.
It is what it is. We'll file that under it is what it is. 7B is the Fire Department MTO calls, and so this is an information item. Chief, did you wanna take that?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is at committee's request for the MTO calls a review for 2017. As you can see, I listed the responses to 4-1 and 4-16. We continue to submit for all of them. It's a good thing we did the review because we actually noticed an anomaly that some of our invoices were not being paid. And through the process, we found out that there was some time limits that were being enforced by our new claims officer that we weren't aware of. So we've managed to follow up directly with the insurance company and one private company for, to recover some. But yeah, it was very good we did this review. So I guess basically at the bottom, the total invoices sent to MTO was $17,032.57. The total received was $10,375.5. The $36,7561, those are three invoices that we will not be able to, we don't have enough information to follow up on. And we've got two others that are pending that went directly to the insurance company and to a trucking company. And one of those was, they did get back to me and they are going to pay that invoice. So there's one outstanding that we're still waiting on.
Okay. Any questions?
Again, just a comment. I was under the impression that we were submitting these items and we were not receiving any feedback or any compensation. And this is kind of rather fresh air than we are at least. It looks like we've got something like 13, around 13,000 or 13,500 covered out of the bills of 17,000. So I, as me, it's a nile because I thought they were just being disregarded and were putting these things in and nothing was happening, you know? So I think good news and nice, nice to be aware and thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
I just want to commend staff for coming up with a system so that you can capture the system that the government's got in place at the upper tier, which is always a great achievement, quite often hard to figure out sometimes. So your total not recovered is actually gonna be a total not ever able. That's the word I'm looking for, to be written off, basically. You're never gonna see that. So will we see this column coming forward, this in future reports, or we'll see what we're asking for, billing for, and what we're getting? Will this be ongoing?
That's the direction of committee.
Is it through you, Mr. Chair? Can we get direction for that?
So Chief, what's the, now that you have these numbers, what's the effort required to produce the report? Like, how much time does it take your staff to turn it out?
The only issue is the amount of time sometimes for payment. So we could have many invoices outstanding with MTO that we expect payment, but it could be several months before. So I don't think a quarterly update would be handy because I think we're just gonna have so many in the system, we're not gonna really know where we are.
So semi-annually, so like July and January, would that make more sense?
Certainly.
Okay. It gives us kind of a mid-year update and it gives admin the opportunity to see if there's any invoices that have slipped through.
Certainly.
Does, so does that, would that satisfy your request, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah. So we will see total invoice, total received, and you'll have an amount to be written off, which you know you're not gonna get. But then you also have the total pending payment that you know maybe is coming through on, right?
Hopefully going forward, there'll be no more amounts that will be written off.
You'll never know. Never say never.
Never say.
So again, looking for concurrence from committee on that, if that satisfies.
I would be happy once a year, but every six months is fine. Okay.
Okay.
Just a quick follow-up question through you. Is, does this include the stand-down calls as well?
This does not.
Okay. So that's, I think, where Councilor always thinking we're getting paid, it's the stand-down calls that we don't, that we're constantly biting with. This is the actual ones that we can't go. So that's all.
So.
That's important.
Just for clarification, going across the column, say, take 4-1, for example, we responded 14 times. We submitted all 14 times, but only four of the times we were on holiday were actually eligible for payment.
And the rest were stand-downs?
The rest were stands-down. We did not provide services.
Everybody's in the same boat there. Everybody? All right. So thank you for that information. So we'll move on to item 7C, and that is fire station number two. And there is a recommendation from staff accompanying that. So Chief, Madam Ciallo, who wants to, who wants to be the tip of the spear?
Oh, thank you for that analogy. That's lovely. As you know, we've been working away at the condition assessment for County, for County two, no, sorry, for fire station number two in Cardinal. And while we have been advised that the belly and south is in good shape generally, there's a few little safety issues that need to be addressed, it's not ideally suited for purpose of a fire hall. Obviously, this is not something that would be undertaken quickly because it's a great deal of money, but staff would like some direction as to which path to follow so that we can now begin to gather costs and plans and so on. Our recommendation, after having had two reviews of the building, one by Eastern Engineering and one by the architect, all of those experts are telling us that the most cost-effective thing to do is to build new. We were very concerned that we not just disregard the existing building, but we believe that there's a very good series of uses for the existing fire hall, that it can be repurposed into a community room, the training room with its adjacent kitchen would make a terrific community center room for early years, or Cardinal Youth Group, or those groups that are too large for the courtroom at the arena. And additionally, both Public Works and Recreation have a use for equipment storage in the other part of the building. So I understand that this is not an easy thing to move forward on, and I also understand that because councils and lame duck, they can't truly make a decision. We're just looking for some direction generally, whether we should continue to pursue the new hall idea, or if you'd like to put the brakes on it.
Okay. So we'll go around, go around the table here, I'm sure I'll ask you, give some input. Counselor Morell?
It's like Groundhog Day all over again. It's a lot of, a lot of research, very similar to what we embarked upon when we just did the study of the ranking Cardinal and the numbers and the engineering firms, one engineering firm checking on another and getting feedback and the cost of minor retrofit. At that time, I remember it was 2.6 million. And if you added, if you put in a refrigerant plant to do major retrofit, everything would have been 4.3 million, and then you were starting new at 5.2. And it didn't make any sense to put a lot of money into an old building. And I see similar similarities along this, this line with the figures that they presented here. And the overall aspect is that they're saying that the fire hall is not for the present-day fire hall. And we know that safety is a major factor, in particular with regard to our volunteer firefighters. And with regard to cleaning and equipment, not carrying any of the particulate home, being able to disperse it in the fire hall, proper cleansing and showers and facilities so that they're not endangering the lives of their families. I think that's important, and I think that's what was pointed out in the early stages. And I think Augusta went through something similarly recently. And I think we have, we owe it for our volunteer firefighters who, in a survey that was taken years, a few years back, say that they put in about 20 hours per month of volunteer time, training and, you know, meeting and workshops, meetings on Monday nights, 20 hours per month extra. And that's quite a commitment. And the stipends that they get and the safety issues that they have to endure, and we know that there are compensation packages from the province regarding certain types of cancers that are more prominent firefighters, and they're extending the issue all the time. And now there's a concern of carrying it home. I think, my own personal opinion, and I know everybody's worried about taxes, taxes, taxes. But I also know that there are a lot of people that were worried about taxes, taxes, taxes when it came to the old arena and the new one was built. I also know in the treasurer's five-year plan, compared taxes from certain individual in 2012, five years later, exactly the arena was built, their taxes were $32 less in 2017 than they were in 2012 before the arena was built. So this, I'm in favor of moving forward. It's come in under budget. I think we've had committed $20,000 this year for the budget for this item to see and look and study. And I think it's come in under budget, and I think we gotta look at it. You know, like it says here that the two peoples are saying that to do a major, major overhaul of that old building and oftentimes run into problems that you don't foresee with older buildings, it's 2.4 million bill, building and site work and all this. So a project budget of $3 million for the new, and they talked about, yeah, $2 million and 2.5 million are about the same as building a new fire hall. So to me, it's ludicrous to talk about retrofitting and upgrading for 2.5 million if you're gonna get a new one for $3 million. That's how I see it.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Deputy Mayor?
For me, the issue right now isn't what we build, it's, or whether we build new or whether we retrofit. It's what we actually put in place. And when this first came to the table, the discussion was, what are we gonna need? And council was supposed to have been part of that discussion. And I think before we move on and say, we're gonna build a new one, or we're gonna retrofit the old, the next step is to bring members of council forward in part of the discussion to see exactly what is needed. What do we foresee that station being in 20 years and making sure that we accommodate that growth rather than just saying, yeah, we're gonna build and wait for the blueprints to come? We should be part of the team deciding what needs to be there. So I would not support this recommendation at this time. As Debbie, as staff has pointed out, we are in lame duck. We should not be making this decision for the next council. We have, we did put money towards the research. We should be part of that research as we were initially intended when it first came up to the table.
Okay. So we have one yes, one no, and just to make sure we're talking about the same recommendation. The recommendation is that we move forward with drawings and a cost estimate, not with, not with building anything, just so that we're all talking about the same thing. So your point is well taken on it, but just so we're all focused on the same outcome. I just, if we can come back, Counselor. Counselor Smale?
Thank you. I see the value in building new as opposed to retrofitting, but I also agree that this isn't a decision that this council should make. But I also would like to set up the new council coming in with the, what the recommendation is actually addressing. So when they come in, they can look at all the back, and this part's already done, and then they can choose what they do from there on. So I support the recommendation as it is to proceed with drawings and cost estimates because that's not committing us to do anything, that's just getting information from the next council.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Packwood?
I agree with the recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Cameron?
The, what is the financial consideration for the recommendation as it stands here To do the, to do drawings and things like that, there's gotta, there's gotta be some kind of cost affiliated with it. So if we do recommend to go ahead, as you're asking, what is, what is the dollars and cents on that?
Not to exceed $15,000?
That's right.
Okay.
Didn't we put in $20,000?
Capital budget included, $15,000.
So I, I'm sorry, I just don't have enough information on this, so I, no, I, I would say no to that.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll go back to Counselor Morell.
I can just add, I just wanted to add the cost of $15,000. I think it was in, it was, we passed it as a council in the budget for the capital expenditure. So lame duck, we ask, I know we are lame duck because, but when it's in the budget and it's been okayed as the budget, it's not a lame duck issue as it's presented here. So that's, you know, I had.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Would members support an amendment to ensure that the mayor is at least involved in the discussions when it comes to preliminary drawings and what is needed? So somebody from the council table is in the discussion.
So the Deputy Mayor is looking to see if he would support a change to the recommendation. I think that we should let the planners and the engineers do the drawings, and then if the mayor's successful in his reelection bid, then he can have input on the outcome.
We all hear it, don't we? They all hear it.
But I don't think that, for my, for my part, I don't think that staff precludes or excludes input from members of council, particularly the head of council, but I don't think that the recommendation needs to be changed. So is there any uptake on changing the recommendation? Okay. Counselor Smale, anything further?
Yeah.
Mr. Packwood, Mr. Cameron?
No. I, still, I just have to, I just have to reiterate that I just don't know that much about it, is what's gone on in the past at various meetings. I'm leaning, I'll tell you though, I am leaning towards new. I would lean very strongly towards new because I just, I'm only flawed the dead horse in my times.
Right.
But anyway, no, as, I just, I would say no to this recommendation.
So do we have a mover for the recommendation? Counselor Morell, a second there? Mr. Packwood? So any further comment from, from the committee? Okay. So I'll call the question. The recommendation is that committee recommends that council approve moving forward with preliminary drawings and cost estimates to build a new fire station number two. So all in favor? One, two, three? All opposed? One, two? Motion carries through to two. Thanks very much. So I did not note at the start of the meeting, but the mayor senses regrets. He's attending the AMO conference and participating in ministerial delegations this week, so he would be here if we did have the year of the province in Ottawa at AMO. So move on to item 7D, and that is the emergency overall responsible operator for the Bennett Street well of supply. Mr. Mayor?
What's your recommendation?
And we have a mover? Is there a second? The Deputy Mayor. Did you want, did you have anything to add before I call the question?
I guess I'll just make one comment. The reason this is stemming from is because the Bennett Street well supply is such a small system. If you recall back, that we're part of the Onward Network, which is the Ontario Water Response Network, which something like the Bennett Street well supply wouldn't be privy to, just based on the size of them, because they can't perform a reciprocal services. So in this particular sense, it makes sense for us in an emergency situation to temporarily provide that service.
Right. Okay. So duly moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you. Item 7E, Counselor Morell has excused himself. That's the Seu Drain Engineers Report. It's a recommendation of that. And we have a mover? Counselor Smale, is there a second there? Mr. Packwood? Thank you. Director of Operations, do you have the comments on the...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I'd like to introduce Mr. Kevin Hawley from the Greer-Galloway Group. He is, he is the author of the Engineers Report and is also at this point our Drain Superintendent. And Kevin has had numerous conversations with both, with both the Hendersons and Mr. George Panchuk, who was, who was here this evening on getting this Engineers Report done and writing what would have been initially an error on the process and method undertaken. So I believe this brings everything under, under compliance with the Drain Act, so.
Okay. Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I've got a lot of questions on this report. First of all, we ran some issues with the Brewstring, and I don't want those repeated. So, Mr. Hawley, are you a, through you, Mr. Chair, Mary?
Well, let's direct our questions to the Director of Operations, and then if he is in a...
Is Mr. Hawley, it says he's an engineer, but is he a drainage superintendent? Like, is there a special signature that someone who is licensed to deal with drainage issues that would have, be different from simply having a, I mean, simply, you know, from having an engineer in a solid two?
So the distinction, just for clarification, is that in reference to the JRDR, the issue that came up, an engineering tech versus an engineer, is that your...
A drainage superintendent or a drainage engineer versus an engineer, like a chemical engineer, civic engineer? So that if we end up in front of the tribunal again, will that be an issue? Is that...
I am confident to answer that Mr. Hawley has the qualifications to produce such a report under the Drain Act.
Okay. And that will stand out. Okay. So this, in accepting this report, we accept it in its entirety in the way that it's currently ready. So I'll just, page three, very top of page three, we have the second line. This abandoned differed than the recommendation. So it should have either differed from the recommendation or been somehow different other than the word than, or something's missing. At the bottom of the page, the Township of Edgbury Cardinal than THAN ININ acted. Should it not be then enacted? And was there a drain altercation or was there a drain alteration?
Okay. So, so if I can, Deputy Mayor, so we're not gonna go through the grammatical corrections.
But we won't go through the rest of them, but they've changed the meaning.
Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor, I think, I think the meaning is very clear. And so if the, if the thrust or the intent, if you have questions about the intent of a section in the report, let's, let's take a look at that. But any, any grammatical corrections, if you could submit those in writing, I'm sure that, I'm sure that they can make the necessary changes.
Is the purpose of this report is to, for us to accept it in its current form on behalf of someone who's paying for this report other than us? And if, so this is a preliminary report. Is there gonna be another one that we'll be following?
So the recommendation is that committee recommends that council receive the preliminary report prepared by Greer-Galloway Group and distribute a copy of the report, a copy of the report to benefiting owners of the drain, and direct staff to prepare a bylaw adopting the Engineers Report, forming part of the Seu municipal drain. That is the intent.
That is the intent. So by receiving preliminary report, does that mean there's another report coming?
Thank you through the Chair. Obviously, if there are items where there may be spelling, grammatical errors that need to be corrected, they will be corrected in its, in its final form before brought forward for the bylaw.
Okay. And distributing to the benefiting owners, are, is that the owners listed entirely on the back of the, of the package? Or on the, there's another list of owners on the inside, which I didn't compare, but I'm gonna make the assumption they're the same? So is that the owners that will be getting a copy of this so that they now know, they'll know how the new drain flows rather than straight across that it does a, has a...
That is correct.
Okay. And the bottom line from this report that I get is that the amount of flow through the main, the main outlet going into Matilda is no change. It's just as fluid as it has ever been. The other two might be a little lower, but they're basically coming out with an end result that's the same. So there's not an increase in flow or an increase in flow at the end.
Through the Chair, I'll direct that to the engineer.
Sure. Yeah. In general, the report specifies that there is no increase in flow, it's approximately the same.
And so this will become the new drain, the new Seou drain? I'm fine with the end result in terms of how it gets laid out, but I would be not happy to be paying for a report, again, its final form, in that final form.
Counselors Mal? Mr. Packwood? Mr. Cameron?
No, thank you.
Okay, so we have a recommendation, is there a mover for the recommendation? Mr. Cameron, and a second here. Mr. Packwood, maybe? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, three in, one out, and that's carried, and we'll move on to item seven F. And that is the life agreement for the Johnstown real allowances. Let it all be catch-up here. Madam Cao, do you want to speak to the? The item?
Is that the one they're talking about?
Yes, I have had verbal conversation with Mrs. Fairan Cooper and have advised her that this is not the direction of council. But before I sent the agreement to her, I thought, I wanted to make sure that committee and council were comfortable with the terms that I've drafted.
Okay. So we'll get it on the table, is there a mover for the recommendation? Counselor Shemel, and a second here. Mr. Packwood? Questions, discussion? Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
So you end up at a hundred dollars an acre, did you, just curious as to where you look? Because I know that in other areas, a little more, I'm not sure of quality of land there.
I actually spoke to a couple of farmers in the area, find out what they were currently paying for untitled land in Edwardsburg. I'm advised that the higher rate is further east in Dundas County, but in this county, a hundred dollars is about as much as anyone's pay.
Okay. Any, so the recommendations, the committee recommends that the draft agreement be approved by council and forwarded to Mrs. Fairan Cooper for consideration, and further recommends that council authorize the mayor and court to execute the agreement on behalf of the municipality. Anything further? All in favor? All opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Okay, so item seven?
Yes, go ahead. Through the chair, I'm sorry, a little tardy here, I was thinking. It was an excellent report, I remember receiving it with the breakdown of the survey. Who was it who did that survey? It was a complete apartment?
No, it was Ron Jason, the press stuff that did the survey. It was the, Anne Sutler, was the appraiser.
Yes, that was where we got the ready, extra appraisal comparative and so forth. That was some of the background information, so.
Okay, so thanks for that. Yeah, you're welcome. Item seven G is an easement agreement with McKinnon, and the recommendation is that committee recommends that council pass a bylaw to authorize the mayor and court to execute the agreement with McKinnon. Moved by Counselor Shemel and seconded by Mr. Packwood. Madam Cao, any?
It's essentially a housekeeping matter. We were a bit surprised that we had not already done it. Because when it was told, we forgot.
Okay, great. All in favor? And opposed? And that's carried, great. So something, Deputy Mayor, retake her seat? And we move on to item eight. That's council increase or notice of motion. Does any of the committee have any increase?
One. I sent a note up to, did you get it on the, my head is sore. The Bluegrass Festival was this weekend, and one of the requests that they made was whether we could be able to look into, what do they call it? When you have the trailers and you get rid of the sewage from the trailer?
Dump.
Dumping station, thank you. So I put the, I noticed, sent a note to the mayor and to the Cao, just to let the table know that it might be something to look into for the fair board, the festivals that are there, and to just let everybody know the same.
Okay. Anything else?
I do have, if I can go from, if I may, Mr. Chair, I do have, just the statement, and I can't find it here in my computer skills, but it was in the report that was alluded to with regard to the drainage issue. There were some variables, it was talking about, I was going to use it as kind of a, refreshing our memories. A few years back, we had someone come, and they were concerned about their property being assessed for drainage, even though they had the same, let's say, one acre lot, and they had one acre and it was $200 more for them compared to someone else. But in this drainage issue, in this area here, I had, you know, can you bear with me while I look up here?
Sure.
I'm trying to scroll through, I've got it written down here somewhere. Page seven, the Greer-Galloway report, if you go to the page seven, the Greer-Galloway, that's where it is. I had to go back. And it just kind of stuck out to me. And, okay, first page, page three, okay, I'll find it, page seven, go to page seven. And I remember that lady that was here and somewhat frustrated, and it was a misunderstanding of interpretation of the parameters of the many variables. That the drainage just isn't an issue based on my lot's one acre and the chair's lot's one acre, and therefore were assessed at the same amount. There are different variables, she has it the same size, but there are different things, slope and more drainage in my lot perhaps, and I have to pay a bigger fee. You understand what I'm saying? So I, in the reading of this item for the agenda tonight, even though I recuse myself, it just, in that section, just kind of, I thought, this is probably where it educates us in the fact that if you look at this assessment, the Drainage Act requires that the total estimated cost be assessed against the affected lands and roads under the categories of benefit, outlet liability, injury liability, special benefit, and special assessment of public utility or road authority. So there are all these variables that have to be taken into account. So it's not just a per se benefit based on acreage. That's where I'm coming from. So I thought it was a good time just to kind of bring it up, refresh our memories, and recall the issue that we had a few years back, and just to point out, I guess, in an educational way, that that's... So that's where I'm coming from. And I think, and if I may just elaborate, I think surveying or something is a little bit like that too. Is it not that I could have 10 acres and, or, you know, the chair could have 100 acres, I could have 10 acres, but because of the complexity or something, whatever, and all of the finagling around, it maybe costs more costly too? Is that right, or no?
I'm sorry, that's way outside my area of expertise.
Okay, 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 I just, anybody know?
You're absolutely correct, because I just had some survey work done, and surprise, surprise.
Okay, even though it's a small amount or something, but it was more than somebody with, you know, like a 100 acre farm or something, they could, all mistakes are all easy to put, bang, 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 but in your case, it might be.
And I'll say it again, nobody should buy any property without a survey.
Okay, exactly. All right, okay, well, that's my, just my point.
All right, thank you very much. There is no mayor's report this evening, question period, first to the press. Mr. Lowry, recorder in times, any questions? Okay. Sir, George Panchuk, question?
Yeah, my name is George Panchuk, I live on the Hyman Road. My property is between Canora Farms and the South Nation Conservation Authority, and it all pertains to the Seou drain. I don't know, I haven't been to council meeting for a long time, so you'll have to pardon me if I don't do certain things that should be done, so. The first thing?
The only thing you have to do, sir, is you have the opportunity to ask a question based on items that are on the agenda, so if you have a question, you can direct it to me, and then I will pass it off to staff if they're able to answer it.
I do have, right now, I do have about three different questions here. The Seou drain, this thing was dug before it was even gone to council and everything else, and I didn't say very much at the time, because things, I thought things were going the way they should be going, like, you know? But nobody really said anything, and all of a sudden, there was a drain going there. It was very close to my property. There was a couple of ward drains or ward ditches that were closed, and one made, and that ward drain ended up 30 feet on my side. There was no, when the Seou drain was dug, there was no engineer on site to see where it was going to go. Nobody said where it was going to go, it was only going to be on the property line, and it was just a man with a high hoe, and away he went, okay? My concern right now, all of that stuff is underneath the bridge, okay? The water's underneath the bridge, I've talked to Dave a number of times about this before, and it is where it is right now. Right now, my concern is that the Seou drain is like three feet from my property line, and it's also some places infringing on the property line. And if somebody wanted to build a fence on that, on the property line, it'd end up in the Seou drain. And what's going to happen? Like, you can't do that, you can't plug the Seou drain, okay? So that's one of my concerns, and I've, I'd gone down there with Kevin, and we looked at it. I went down today, and I looked, and I walked down the drain, and I'm looking at some of these pictures that were in there, that the surveyor had done, and that's another thing. I asked Canora Farms to let me know when the surveyor was going to come, because I wanted to put some steel posts in, mark them, and let the surveyors put them in space, in place. I get a phone call at nine o'clock on a Monday morning, and I'm told the surveyor's going to be there at 10:00. I have a serious problem with my wife, it revolved to cancer, I had doctor's appointment, I could not go there. All right? So they, I didn't get the chance to put these posts in so that they could be directly on the property line, all right? I went down, and I was talking to Canora Farms, and I said, "Well, I'd like to put something up." And he said, "Well, go ahead." I put them in, and you know how I surveyed it? Like this, you know? And I got it as close as I could. So that's where they were. Today, when I went up and took a look, there's about two or three of those steel posts. I left my steel post this high, the ones that I saw were like this high. So they had been taken away from where I put them in and hammered in that far down. So I'd like to know, what are you, as a council, going to do about this line? And how far does the ditch supposed to be from a property line? And because the soil is so unstable over there, it's sand, it's all eroding, and it's not eroding on the west or the east side of the ditch, it's eroding on the west side, which is my side. Okay, and when it was dug, there were some holes, and I told them to fix it. They put stumps in a hole, and put sand on top, right on the wall of the ditch. Okay, that's one of my concerns, and that's, you know, it's a sore spot.
So your question is how far the drain can be from a property line?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's one.
Mr. Grant, do you know?
I can defer that to our engineer. I wanted to say that we looked at three feet.
We tried to keep the new proposed location, and George is absolutely correct when we would say that the drains aren't constructed. We tried to put in a drawing to show it three feet away, and George is right, he did have concerns about its property line eroding. The drain theoretically, municipal drain can go anywhere. You can put it anywhere. So in the Drainage Act itself, there's nothing saying that you can't put a drain right on top of property line, so it's okay. This location of the drain is usually picked by in here in the original report writing, and that's how the assessment schedule is developed, usually is, an engineer decides the original location of the drain.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, hearing what he's saying, there was no engineer saying that's where it's going to go. The thing was dug already, and then everything is done after.
Right.
The cart before the horse here, so?
Yes.
The other thing is, I've been living there since 58, okay? There's been about three or four different episodes about the Seou drain. People were notified before what was going to happen, all right? None of this has ever happened with this drain back there. And the other thing is, I knew because I was there, all right? But all the people that you had on that list, does anybody there know about this drain being moved and all that stuff? I don't think so.
On which list, sorry, sir?
The attached list that has the drainage, you know?
Okay, yeah.
And those people, if you're digging a ditch, you notify them, say, "Hey, we're digging a ditch, you're going to pay for it." Now that this ditch has been changed, these people don't even know about it. There might be some people there who'll be very disturbed about what happens here, you know? And that is not right.
So your question is what the notification requirements are for?
That's right.
Benefiting landowners when there's construction or improvements made to the drain?
Yes, that's right.
Mr. Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've been through this discussion with Mr. Panchuk several times with me. As I said from the start, and as I notified committee on several occasions, that the ditch work was done prior to our knowledge, right at the bat, and we have worked through to correct that and ensure that the end result meets with the Drainage Act. So has all the benefiting owners been notified? No, that's part of this package, because there is no cost to the benefiting owners at this time for that work that was done, because the particular landowner that made the alterations is covering the cost of the Engineers Report. But as the recommendation stated, the benefiting owners will be notified.
Okay, thank you.
I don't accept that answer. I don't, I don't, because these people are all taxpayers, they're all involved in that. Whatever happens to that particular area, they are involved, you know? Like, because this thing was changed, they have to know. They're paying taxes, you know? I wasn't, when they first dug it, I wasn't even notified, and council must have known that they were doing something back there. Because he had to get access to back there, and he had to talk to council about the road going back there, because you couldn't get back there with a four-wheel drive, let alone with a horse. That was, even with a horse, you'd have a hard time to get back there. So you people knew what was going on, and yet you still didn't do anything about it, you know? Anyhow, the report, there are, with Kevin, he'd been very good with me, and I, I think I've been good with him. We went over this two, three times. There's still a few little errors, okay? They're minor, but to me, they're there. Where, anyways, so I just did one of these maps over here, where it shows the Seou drain, okay? Seou drain stops at the Conservation Authority line and my lot. And all these prints over here, they show us going all the way back to the roadway, to the Pitt Dale Road, okay? Now, the thing is, if that's not changed, and somebody looks at this 10 years from now, he's going to say, "Well, that's where the Seou drain goes." That's not right.
Okay.
It's not right.
So?
It says abandoned, decided, George, we did change that.
Yeah.
So the Drainage Superintendent says the change has been made, but if you would kindly submit those specifics, the errors on the map to Mr. Grant, he'll review with, Mr. Grant, is it fair that you'll review that with the Drainage Superintendent to ensure the accuracy of the map prior to it coming to council?
Through the chair, we certainly will. We, as has been indicated, we've had several discussions with Mr. Panchuk and tried to incorporate all of those nuances that have been suggested. So if, for some reason, on one of those maps that's been missed, we'll certainly look to correct that.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, so Mr. Panchuk, thank you very much for your questions.
Could I ask you one more question?
Yes, sir.
Okay? Because I haven't been here, this has been going on since 2014, and I've been talking with Dave all along, and sometimes he can't give me the right answer or whatever, because he doesn't know. The other question I want to know is that, what I'd like to know is, because Peggy Taylor was talking about the report that Kevin is doing, okay? That's fine, and that... That's fine and dandy. That report, a lot of it is just history until the part where it says where, you know, it was moved and dug by whatever. But I'd like to, I'd like to find, I'd like to hear from you as a council saying that you approved for all of the stuff that went back there and that you people okayed it, and that you write that in the report. He can give you the report to what's happened now and approve it. But then you as a council, it's your responsibility to look after that Seou drain after it's done. And you are the ones who should be putting your name on the bottom of the, of their report and saying, we as a council has okayed this, this report, this is the way it's going to go, and finalize it.
All right, well, thank you very much for that. So, so council will follow the recommendation made by committee, and then the municipality will exercise all of our responsibilities under the Drainage Act. So that's, that's the best that I can offer in response to your, in response to your statement. So thank you very much for your questions and for your interest. We have no closed session this evening, and look for a motion to adjourn. Sir, mover? Mister Packwood, seconded by Counselor Schmal, all in favor? Meeting is adjourned, thank you.